I will call to order the September 4th School Board meeting. If you can all join us for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, created in justice for all.
Okay, minutes from August 7.
Move is presented.
I will second, make Kendra, any comments?
Yeah, I have one comment about the handbook. We had talked about the visitors and the way it's written is the supreme. The principal is responsible for developing, implementing procedures, construction, utilization, volunteer. And remember we talked about, I was surprised because I know a lot of teachers have asked for parents, they just send something home. And then you said you were going to look at it.
It's part of, it's actually part of the policy.
The policy? So, Ken, I mean, so that, so I guess then the way it would work would be if the teacher wanted parent volunteers, they'd just go to you. And then would you send a letter home to the class or they would just have permission to do it? Is that all?
Yeah, yeah, I, we've never really had a problem in the past. It's, yeah, it's, we, but we are still looking at all of that, the handbook, the application, there's, it is a policy and we do have to abide by that.
Yeah, I just, I just want to look like we're not a community school, like we don't, you know, encourage parents to come help out.
We've never had an issue with that at all whatsoever.
Okay. That was another comment because that's, we had that discussion.
Yeah.
I see a typo on the third page.
Let's say again.
I see a typo on the third page on the D enrollment update. She's A R B and with a Y here.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, all in favor of approving the minutes with those papers for good?
Aye.
Aye. Any others? Okay. Approve, we are a public comment.
Greg Whitmore, North Road. So as, you know, you discuss budget in the future. I want everybody keep in mind that I went to the, that tour earlier in the year of the school. And the general consensus or narrative that was being pushed through was that there's too many adults in the building. We just don't have places to put them. So you have an adult working in every nook and cranny in the building. You know what? I agree. There's too many adults in the building. I want you to look back over the last 10 years. And how many of these positions were here 10 years ago? When were these positions added? Why were they added? And how is this sustainable moving forward, right? Let's look at something like Pembroke as a cautionary tale. Where someone walked in earlier in the year and made a motion and $3 million was cut. I mean, it's a horrifying thing to have to deal with, to say the least. What if somebody did that here? What, you know, what if the town got fed up with it, said, you know what? The costs are crazy and we just had, what, a $3 million increase in the school budget? And someone walked in and cut a million dollars from the budget, how would we deal with that? All right, so please keep that in mind moving forward. And really think about how are we going to have the best school possible while keeping the taxpayers? Thank you.
Thank you.
Carol Rhodes, Church Street. I don't know if you'll be able to answer this, but I made a query before and I'm wondering, will these recordings be on YouTube after the fact? I know you went to a new system, so.
Yes. They get uploaded to YouTube, so, right?
Hmm.
Yeah.
Excellent. Thank you very much for that. And the other question I have, I was looking through the website and I noticed that there was a comment somewhere that said that the board meetings, these meetings, were subject to change without notice. And that, a question I've got for you all is whether that's consistent with N91A. Because that doesn't seem to be, as a general rule, but comment?
Thank you. Other public comments? Seeing none, we will move on to agenda review. Do you have any consent items?
No.
Okay. And I don't think we need non-public. Excellent.
Wanted to add something to the agenda.
We can discuss it, it might not get out of.
Okay. Just again, the issue of the field non-DCS students. Sorry, I have to leave. Needing clearer communication on how to participate in extracurricular.
Okay. We can add it to another meeting agenda.
Right.
If you could let me know sort of what the question is. There are a bunch of policies and resources, so if there's something that's unclear, will you just let me know?
I got all of those here.
Yes.
In the email, I left them all. And that's not the issue.
Okay, so can you just send me an email and let me know what the issue is? And then we can either hopefully resolve it or we can put it on the agenda.
Okay.
That'd be great. Thank you. Review of correspondence. I don't think there was any all-board emails. I did, I will be forwarding and I shouldn't have done it before the meeting, I apologize, but I will do it. And we can attach to the minutes. There was a, an email from Andrea Hodling about the parent contact. She had some questions and wanted to make her concerns. She wanted to let everyone know about her concerns. So I will forward that to the board and we can attach it to the minutes. I don't think there was any other, there were any other correspondence to the specific board. No consent agenda items. Okay, we'll move on to immediate business. And the first thing is bus routes.
I just want to make sure if you looked at the bus routes today, I did pull down and upload change, a few changes to, was it pink to purple?
Yes.
Yeah. A few times on there changed, so if you looked at them before, I have to be honest with you, there's differences, but pink and purple, we're tweaked a little bit. I think Amy, you're, are you here, there are questions?
Yeah.
Or you just hear it just.
There are questions.
Okay.
Do we need approval for?
We do need approval, yes.
Okay, I will make a motion to approve the updated bus routes.
Right.
Any discussion?
Haven't heard anything from parents about routes or anything? Do you have any issues, anything?
Nothing I know of. Nope, I, any, lots of, some emails, they were told to communicate directly with Dale.
Oh, okay.
So I don't know if, if they, anything I had, I forwarded on to Dale. There was a question about a stop and what time and it didn't change. And I was like, well, not all bus, not all the times changed. They readjusted several things, so.
As a sign on my daughter, I absolutely love the bus.
She comes and bebopping off it with her little.
Very exciting times for at our house.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Happy as clam.
Yeah. Literally.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so all in favor of approving the amended bus routes?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the 24, 25 board goals. I admittedly got these into the drive quickly today.
I did not make a copy, I'm happy to do so, if anybody needs a paper copy.
Sure. Yeah, did you make a copy?
Do, yep.
Do you have a copy?
Can I make a co, I, other, I have to get off to. Two-step authentication.
I'll look at it on. You all pick, so. Just maybe if we. Do you need one answer?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, you don't. Yeah, sorry for some of it, I could have been in my hands.
That was my fault. This is working?
It should be. Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. Okay, so I took a stab at drafting the updated goals based on our discussion at the last meeting. But I don't know if anyone's had any other thoughts of they slept on it for a while and thought about a great new goal? Or if there's anything else that you want to change about the goals? Let me know.
What are you, is it too specific when you have a training presentation, say one math, one literacy, one science? I mean, those are the things that's.
I don't think it's too specific.
If that's what, if everybody, I mean, absolutely talk about, you know, you have to agree, but I, I, I thought it might be easier too for everybody to know this is coming, you know, this is trying for the literacy. And the only reason I don't think social studies is just because of the United States. I don't think it's too specific, but we're, we're already sort of talking about a general data presentation so that, that would encompass all the testing as well. So science would be included, so if you want three, that would sort of take up one. And then if, yeah, I was actually thinking, I'd rather have a presentation that says just what it's, this is what we're doing, these are programs we're doing, this is how successful they are. Yeah, but that's me, so I don't know. You guys agree with me? I like the idea of just one at a time coming. If you could get everybody, then you're gonna be like, wait a minute, was that under here or was that under? I'd rather hear from. I think you can go more in depth on what's being used and the tools and how successful.
Yeah, I like that idea.
I could, I could go either way. I think that something that we probably would like to hear about would be the, the first round of data, I guess, reports. Or even just observations on the new math curriculum that we invested in for. But if we said that we want them spread out over the year, then would that end up being locking that presentation into a time that wouldn't be most useful when the data is available from that, like, investment that we made? So I don't.
I guess we could ask, can we just put that out there, help perceive the, who have the heads of, and like, what would be the easiest time?
And are there other things that we'd like to hear from about DCS, not just those three things? And if that was the case, then putting them one day to, one day to day and then two other presentations about whatever else about.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, I personally think.
Community, for instance, like you got this survey initiative, a lot of people here, like that could, things could come up, that wouldn't be one of those three. And if we had them all together, then that would open up the other ones for whatever was pressing at that time. I agree with that.
Yeah, I think, I personally think it's fine as written and we can include, you know, we can discuss topics. I don't know that we need to sort of identify them as, as a goal. If we, you know, if we decide to pivot, like maybe we have one and we say, actually, we want to hear about this other thing. Then we technically are, are feeding our goal, right? If we decide to pivot. So I think, I think it's fine to be general and then we can decide the schedule and the, the topics.
Do you want, rather than assigning the three separate, you could say that we would by the end of the year, we'd like to hear about all three.
Yeah.
And then when they come up, it's fine and flexible, but by the end of the year, we'd like to hear about.
That's what I was kind of.
Rather than a lot.
Because I don't care one there.
Yes. Yes.
I just, I just know for me, it's easier to really follow what's going on if it's more specific rather than, this is literacy, this is math, this is like all of once, it's too much.
Yeah.
Even when you get the test scores, the results.
We just got this, this morning, they, they were released this morning. So we've already been working on the graphs and okay, we're organizing the data to show DCS compared to state. And that was going to be our first presentation. But if you want them specific, that would, that would work.
Yeah. But we also have like, I mean, we also have star testing or other kinds of testing.
I repeat.
And the state tests. And then the programs, right? So it's more than just state testing. I mean, I hate to judge everything just by that one state test, although I know science would be kind of.
So what would the board like to do? Do you want to change the wording? Do you want to keep it? Do you want to be more specific?
Well, I would move that we would add science, literacy and math would be included in this, but not specific about when it is or what.
So would say including topics such as science, literacy and math test results?
Probably do literacy, math, but science, law.
Whatever, that's right there before the test, put it between as and testing.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, you think that makes sense? I made it on a piece of paper. Create schedule for triennial presentations regarding student achievement and curriculum, including topics such as literacy, math, science, test results and progress on school initiatives.
Do we have a motion yet?
We do not.
I will move to approve the goals as amended.
Okay, I will second. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor of approving the goals for the 24, 25 school year as amended?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, special election stipends. So this is, we started having this discussion at our last meeting. And then I think everyone wanted to think about it for a little while. I guess my last comment to add to the discussion from last time is we obviously don't have a budget for any of this, which I think we probably discussed last time. So we don't have, we obviously have an election budget, but it's because of the unsecured, we don't have, you know, sort of any money that we've put aside for this. So just keep that in mind during this discussion that, you know, we'll have to find this money somewhere. If we decide to do certain. So what we were discussing last time was whether or not we are going to offer stipends to the, not the town clerk, she can't accept a se, a stipend, but her deputy clerk and the desk clerk and our moderator and why, school district clerk?
Trevor.
Trevor.
All the SAU employees.
All the SAU employees. We, you know, we, obviously, our decision to go forward with the special election did create a lot of work for a lot of people, so. How and can we, do we want to recognize that work with a stipend?
As I've been thinking about it, it certainly has opened up a can of worms in terms of complexity, just because there's all different people and yes, there has been more work. I, I think there's, there's a way of looking at different positions of people. There are elected officials who ran for and were elected to town office with, I think, the intent to serve the town. And I think from that perspective, I haven't been paid for being on the school board for a number of years and so that, even though there's more work. So I, from that perspective, I don't know whether, some people we necessarily need to be, obviously, second. But at the same time, there's a lot of other people. Yes, we need a lot of work, but I don't know how we go through and figure out every single person that had extra work from this decision. And then somehow account for how much each person, how much extra work each person has. It sounds like an unwilling beast to be created. And I think I'm leaning towards not digging into our already limited budget to pay more per state. But I'm, I'm looking to.
I think we had, the board had decided on 250, right? And then you went, or you talked about it and then you went back to town hall.
So we had, we had, yeah, we had initially offered a $250 stipend to Kelly. And she is not able to accept our stipend. Which none of us knew. I don't want anyone to think that was shady business happening. We were trying to recognize that. It is a bit of speculation, but we were trying to recognize that our special election may be causing more work than would originally, would normally happen for a state primary. So yes, that is where we landed. We, we discussed several figures last meeting and then we all wanted to sleep on it, I think, before we made decisions, so.
Your own, so the, your school district clerk already contacted, typically they turn in their slips after they do an event. So another deliberative was how the town clerk or school district clerk typically gets $630 for the whole process. And that person is going for another whole process and I think they're planning to turn in their slip for payment for giving it twice. But they're in our budget and they work for us. And then the moderator, the same thing, they, you know, they spend modest $110. But that will need to be paid twice because we have to all other cycle. I think those are the only two costs that are in our budget for the year.
And those are contractual per RSA, is that correct?
Do you have flexibility on payment? But I, right or wrong, I think the assumption has been made that, you know, I do this job, it's a once a year thing and I get paid this. So now I'm doing the job twice this year, I'm expecting to get paid again. So that's not the board's intention, I need to convey that.
Who do we think about that as, the first time they did it, they had all of the questions in mind, and now it's not question?
I don't know that their role changes based on this. Questions?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Maybe it was time.
Yeah.
That's time.
Sure.
I'm, I'm leaning, I'm leaning to not, just not, not that kind of. I'd be more than happy to make three gokays and bring them to the office next week. Say thank you for what they did. I know it's not money, but guys, okay, that becomes a reward. They're pretty.
I mean, money's not bad, money's not bad.
So if we are not going to do anything, then no motion is necessary. We would need a motion if we are going to pay money.
Yes.
We're not going to make a motion to not do anything.
Correct.
Do we still need to deal with the moderator and clerk? Okay.
That's your budget. That's our employees, our school district budget. I would make a motion that we pay them for the second one. That's their job. I could see where that would be expected, but. And that's in the budget, right?
It's in the budget for one election, not for double.
And I feel like, then that, doesn't that lead to, then why not do that for everybody? It's not in the budget.
Well, are the other people even paid in the first place?
Yeah, they're, their, their two positions are probably the only paid for that task. To do the deliberative session and serve as the moderator, it's $110. And now the moderator is doing, did a deliberative and served as the moderator for a second time. So I think the expectation was be paid for that task. So there just needs to be proof of diligence and clarity around how you're.
So is, is that codified somewhere? That, is that a contract that was signed?
They don't have contracts.
Just precedent.
They don't have, I don't think this has ever been done.
I know there's town suspension, there have been special.
Yeah. In your, but in your budget, I mean, you budget X amount of dollars for the moderator and there's no contract, there's no, I think it's just a, an assumption that they know they have to do one session for this year. There were two. Isn't that all?
I think the school did, has done special meetings before, but I don't remember. I can't remember, we had at least one. They should contract.
You don't have to know.
Yeah, I was saying, it was probably about, I don't know, 20 years ago. Okay. So do we want to keep it the same for the clerk and the moderator? For the special election? Or do you want to do nothing? Or do you want to do something interesting?
Well, I move that we do something, so nobody second.
Yeah, you move and pay for the second election. It, the same amount?
Yeah.
As we pay for the general.
Weird to try to cross the difference.
Yes, yes, it would. That has proven very hard. Okay. I will second your motion. Any discussion, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of paying the clerk and the moderator for the school district the same amount for the special election that we typically do for the regular March election? All in favor? Aye. Is that everyone? Okay. Sounds good. Is that it? No one else wants to make any more motions? Okay. We will move on, okay. D, joint letter to town with Board of Selectmen. So I tried to listen to most of the Board of Selectmen's meetings. And the last, not the last one, two meetings ago, they brought up the idea of sending a letter to the town about anticipated tax increases. Their idea was to send out a letter sort of saying the school board budget went up by this much. Our budget actually went down, or their costs went down, or whatever, I don't, I don't. They were figuring they saved the town $300,000, I think. They, and they wanted to move forward with sending out a letter. Someone made a public comment saying you should work with the school board on this and send it out jointly. So that the Board of Selectmen is not sending something on our behalf saying there's budget went up by X amount, so your taxes are going up. I sent the Board of Selectmen an email saying that I would bring it to our board. I don't have the authority to agree to a joint letter alone, but I would bring it to our board to see if it is something that we wanted to join in on and how we wanted to go about doing that. I think the Board of Selectmen has nominated Fred to draft it from their perspective. And then I would probably love to have myself or if someone else wants to volunteer, draft the school's portion. If we wanted to participate in the joint.
I think it's a great idea because, I mean, we, the us and them is not working.
Right.
And having it together, it makes it sound like we're all, this is about your taxes.
Yeah, and I mean, I, from my perspective, you know, obviously, we all know that the budget went up. And we, at deliberative, had the pie chart showing what is causing it to go up, how much is going up. I think the complicated thing about conveying this right at this moment is that the tax rate is not going to be set until October. I know they wanted to sort of get out ahead of this so that it's not a surprise when the tax rate comes out. But it is hard to, to sort of speculate the impact of our increased budget on the tax rate, right? Like, we did return some money to the town at our last meeting. There's like a lot of factors that are way more complicated than I am aware of in calculating the tax rate. So I think that's just something we need to think about. It's like, what are we trying to convey and what is our message? And do we want to participate?
I would agree that I think it's important to have more communications, always a good thing, I think. I, I do wonder why. I, I do wonder why this seems like a thing that either should already happen or maybe does already happen. Isn't there like an annual report or something that comes out about the funding and all of that stuff? Is it just that this is the format of a letter rather than the format of an annual report?
So the annual report is given out at deliberative maybe or at voting. So like, yes, theoretically, the town is on notice that our budget increased because it was on the war. Right? Like, there was a voter guide, people probably may have glanced at it to show how much our budget increased. But whether they remember that or whether they know sort of the categories that created our budget increase. Do we want to sort of draft a narrative about these are the various reasons that our budget increased?
Hang on, I'm off work.
And if more information, can you give them the data? Yeah, like, and that's something that I've thought about ever since I decided to run, was how to get the information out there to people. And as clear as it can possibly be, whether it's just a bullet that says, you know, because of what we voted on in March, this is what is happening. So we know the spread line has gone up to show the percentage and to we know with high school, that's gone up and it just, and not saying anything more than just facts. This is, these are the line items that went up. I really like the idea of doing it together.
Yeah, absolutely, if we can. Okay, so it sounds like there's consensus that people are in favor of sending the letter. Does anyone want to volunteer?
You have such rude words.
I will do it if, if that is what the board would like to do. But if anyone else wants to do it, that would also be fine with me. Do we need a motion? Okay, so I will get in contact with Fred to see what we can draft. Just thinking logistically, so the Board of Selectmen are meeting probably next week? I don't know that we will get a draft to them by Monday.
What day is it Wednesday? I know this is.
Yeah.
I hope it gets next week.
But your draft, will you match those boards for gratification?
I would, I would hope so. I mean, it's.
Yeah, otherwise we would need to empower you to.
Correct, right, right, right. So that's. So hopefully, we can get it approved by the Board of Selectmen on the sixteenth and to us on the eighteenth.
Did somebody have a timeline of when they wanted to send this out, do you know?
No, I mean, I, a little bit interfered in the process with the Board of Selectmen. So they, they were just going to send it out and I said, can we please work together on this? Actually, like, I think this would act, would be really beneficial if we could do this together. So I guess that's my concern is that they're going to want to send this out much more expeditiously. But I'll talk to Fred and hopefully we can agree that we finalize it by the, on the eighteenth.
You're pretty confident. Otherwise, should we make a motion now to see if we could empower you to make the decision? If there's some sort of timeline that we're not aware of that has to go out, then I think it's important for us to be involved in this. Or that's, I want to, I want to either, it opens up if they really need to move for some reason or not be involved.
Or an emergency meeting.
Or an emergency meeting or something.
Yeah, not ideal though. I'm not confident only because in the, the last Board of Selectmen meeting, they didn't really discuss that much about it. So I don't know. I don't know what the Board of Selectmen is going to do. I have just offered to run it together with them. I've not really gotten an affirmative. Yeah, but I also didn't have the authority to definitively offer. So I said, I'll bring this to the board and we will maybe want to jump in on this.
Did the board authorize strike to write the letter or are they looking at it and approving it before it goes?
I think he said draft, which to me means he will bring it back to the board.
Sounds like he would.
Yeah. That's my best, yes.
That doesn't sound like an emergency, really short time.
I don't, I don't, I don't know.
All right, I think I'm leaning towards maybe if we need to have a permission to meeting.
Yeah, I think that would be fine.
Rather than making decisions based on.
Yeah, I, I just, I've not really, I have not talked to Fred about it because I did not have the authority to move forward with it without the board's. Yeah.
I think he's going to be away for several weeks.
Oh.
In September, early October. Traveling.
Okay.
So you may want to get this done soon as.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I did tell him that this was coming to the board tonight and did not hear back, but. Yeah, the assumption might be that the board is authorizing we to do the letter and it's going to get them. Because like me saying, like, you might, the board might want to make a motion. Allowing you to.
All right, I'll move to, to authorize our chair to write a letter for us with the select board to participate in this report writing cooperation.
Any discussion? I mean, if we have the timeframe that we can come back together and come back together first.
Ideally, I would love to not be the only one with eyes on this.
No, I'd like to, like, do a seat, point and writing, signing for them.
I would love that.
Could it be done over email conceivably if you're just getting individual calls from us or other discussion?
I don't, I don't know if it's decision, it's making a decision or what you can. You could have two people with eyes on it before it goes.
Okay, so all in favor of Nate's motion?
All right.
I.
I, yes.
I'm not quite clear. Does that mean she's being right and we don't get to see it?
If necessary, that, if the timeline is like in two days and it has to happen, then it would not come back.
She gets to, Fred, he says, I'm leaving tomorrow and get it to me tonight or something like that.
Yeah. Uh, it is, it would be my preference for it to come back.
And an emergency meeting, you need to have post twenty-four hours.
Correct. Okay, so I think it's passed. Was it, I didn't get.
Was it three eyes?
I, were you and I in answer? Okay, four. No, it's four, one, zero. Okay, culture, climate survey.
So we uploaded, we didn't make, it's pretty long. So we just uploaded it to the drive for you to start looking at. So we're using this as a reminder, baseline data to sort of inform the people who have got the SAU as well as the entire leadership team. You know, we've been reminding everyone that this is snapshot in time. We've never done this. So it's just our first test to see, you know, what the results yielded. We did put your results in. And then we also had, I think Amy put a staff version of a side by side. So DCS staff and the entire SEU to see how our staff compared because we can work directly with our staff. So that one went in this afternoon. I'm just thinking you might like to see the side by side on that because she did put together. We talked about doing this, making sure we do it annually so that we can see whatever work we decide to, to do. See if we're making any progress or opinions have changed. We talked about perhaps having, you know, we were, as a leadership team when we started digesting this, we, a couple of schools, the data yielded results that indicated staff may feel that student discipline is not always fair. So we said, well, we've got new discipline laws and maybe part of this is education, you know, did you all know? Because they don't necessarily always do that with staff. We follow the laws, we follow the regulations, we follow the policies. But I don't know how much of an understanding staff has about the constraints that are placed on the administration. So we, we just talked about looking at those specific areas to find out where we provide education, presentations, whatever that may be. So take a look, digest it. If you want to come back to a meeting and say, hey, there was something specific to DCS that was concerning to me that felt like was really out of whack from the SEU results, we'd like to talk about this further. We're happy that you got this through. But we're just getting your hands and.
I mean, in some ways, I'm not sure I, I'm not sure I agree it has to be out of whack with the SAU.
Or concerning, yeah.
Concerning, right. Can I ask a couple of questions?
Yep.
The students, you have ninety responses. Was that DCS ninety responses?
Yes, it was.
By three, by three. And I had looked up this year's, because I didn't, I couldn't find the previous year. There are two hundred and twenty-two kids in the class. Is that about right? So maybe not quite half responded. Well, I think the percentage is of, yeah, so it's.
Yeah, yeah.
And don't forget, we have to have parents opt in to surveys. So you need to get parent permission to do any non-academic surveys. So it's not something that we can just hand out and say, do this, please.
Okay.
So that's.
I just want a clarification.
And Deerfield did really well, but the sample size in Pembroke was too small to use for students and we have way more students than Deerfield. So I know the team worked really hard and wanted to hear from students. So it was actually, yeah, just, just for your information. Deerfield did well by getting the number of students that they did.
And then the staff responses, it's thirty-nine. No, I think teachers, there's thirty? So staff, would that include Paris, teachers?
I think the first question is about what your role is in school.
I don't know.
Pretty sure.
There's a non-certified. Oh, I didn't take it that way. Yeah, I wasn't even thinking.
Yep.
Certified, non-certified.
So eighty-two percent certified.
Really low, yeah, thirty-nine.
Non-certified is everyone, speech and language, OTs, everybody. A non-certified could be cafeteria, kitchen, custodian, Paris.
But thirty-nine is pretty low, isn't it, for all the staff in the school?
It was given to everyone, so.
No, I just, I'm not, I'm not criticizing.
No, no, I'm just, I, I was given to everyone and whoever responded did. I, I.
Like, I'm just curious what percentage of the entire staff that would be.
Well, we have over a hundred staff members, so, yeah, like from soup to nuts.
So maybe that.
Are there, I feel like, in my experience with some of these kinds of surveys, I'm trying to get information, getting more people to take the survey and provide feedback. Publicizing or acknowledging that people have been heard and that something is, we're looking at the results, you know, is all I think important to staff. Is there in your plan something like, I guess it's released now that it's here, but will it be, let's say, sent to parents? Will it be publicly acknowledged and released so that?
A leader, yeah, that's a good question. We have an NSAU leadership meeting next week, week after, and we are actually starting to talk about what we're going to do with this, with our staff, with our students, with our family. So we even had made decisions about that, yeah, but that is a conversation that's on the agenda for our meeting.
And sometimes if it's a small, you know, trial, like, it can be the people who have something to say who end up taking the time to do it. And maybe for next year, eyes on the future to get more people to, to get a broader picture. Saying we're hearing.
Absolutely, yeah.
I wish, for me, I mean, I look at this and yeah, it gives me information. I wish there was feedback from them, like, why they. I mean, that's going to give you a lot more information you have to go through, but I look at something and see someone disagrees or something, well, why? I mean, I look at a number, yep. Just many people disagree, but I don't know why. And some, I think that information would be helpful.
It's really hard to get results on a survey and when you ask people to write a sentence, it's even harder.
Right.
You know, and we're, I think we would book at a thirty percent return on the survey. It has.
Good.
It's really tough to do surveys again.
I think that, looking at it, there were a few red flags and I'm sure you guys listed it too. One more specifically jumped out at me. But, yeah, I think what you're doing is great, having the leadership do it. And my good reason made that be very public about what the leadership committee start, you know, comes up with for a solution so that the staff know that they came out of that. But some really good stuff though, and I love the, I thought the responses from the family were great. Really good and remarkably, actually a lot more quite better than the SAU responses, you know, very positive. The results were good. And I, I thought for the most part, the student stuff was very positive too. I think the only one, I love like adults in the school treat students respectfully, eighty-two percent, fifty percent. That's fantastic, you know? I think the only one I come, when I started, students respect one another. That was like, I clearly disagreed. But, you know, you know. And that's all.
Middle school, same middle school, it's harsh, middle school stuff, yeah, middle school stuff, but I thought the results were good.
Well, so I glanced at it quickly this afternoon before, I think, was there a spot where they could write a sentence? No. There was, okay. So, and I understand it's really hard to be people to respond at all and for, I get that. But if you want to take the time to do this, at least give something, a little something specific I like.
Well, you know.
Some people would like.
A good thing that you might want to do in the future is take the ones that stand out, like this is a problem, and survey again. And this was something that came up. Can we have more information about why it felt this way?
Yeah. I think it's very helpful.
We're doing something similar to this in my school district and, and when you, as a teacher on the other side of this, when, if you're in the group that's sort of processing all the results, sometimes those kinds of comments can be a little bit, I don't know, revealing or they can reveal, sort of be, be too, they have sensitive information.
Right.
And so sometimes when you publicize stuff, you can't publicize those comments because they can be more easily linked to different sorts of groups or people or whatever. And so it could be, I don't know, for what, you know, I believe that it doesn't sound like we were on this survey, but sometimes if the school is working on it and they're releasing to us different things than they're looking at because we're up at the thirty thousand.
And that actually brings up a good point I wanted to bring up too. I heard from several people who took the survey that that question about how long have you worked here? Some of them lied, didn't answer it because they knew they would.
They would be done by.
So that's something to keep in mind, that question. Might want to be less than ten years, over two years or something like.
Yeah, I mean, we, I work in healthcare, we do a lot of surveys. If you've ever visited us, we'll send you a survey immediately afterward. But we have a lot of issues with, you know, we can't publish every comment that comes in about a doctor because HIPAA violations, right? And that there are student privacy violations that we can't identify. You know, even if a parent sort of self-identifies their child and their result, like, we should not be publishing that information. So we would have to be incredibly careful about it. Or like, you know, even sort of describing a situation where someone might know that it relates to a particular student. It would have to be, but I think that would be my caution, not that, not that the SAU shouldn't or couldn't collect it, but that we as a board may not even be privy to that information. And definitely couldn't disperse it.
But they might be able to.
Yes.
Give us full, you know, wholesome information that wouldn't identify, wouldn't just so. Why do, why isn't discipline? Why do you think discipline isn't fair for everyone or something? You know, and yeah, they're not going to.
But then they're going to say, I saw a student do this and they didn't get discipline. Then someone could identify that student.
But somewhere in there, there could be a piece of information that is going to give us.
Sure, but not us. I mean, I don't, I think that would be too much for the board to give in.
Yes, like, I don't think that the board can get involved in, in a singular situation. I'm not, that's why I started by saying that we're using this to inform our work. Because again, like, there were a couple of things that rang out and that you noted and there are things that as a leadership team we noted and whether or not it's people's perception is their reality. And maybe we think we administer things very fairly. Maybe we can think we're great at communication, but clearly they don't, or whatever the result was. So why do they think that? Exactly what you're saying. Why do you think that is what we're going to do to move forward? And then, then it's, they know that we booked the disc, we're going to share it with them and we're going to choose one or two areas that we want to.
Yeah, I mean, I think sort of instituting a culture where people aren't nervous about being identified, right? Like, even if they have something, you know, quote unquote negative to say, where there's not this fear of bringing concern forward. And that sort of starts with communicating and being open about what we're doing. So I think it's, I think it's a great starting point. Okay, planning for a public forum. So I know several months ago, we talked about having a public forum in our next meeting. What do we want to do? What do we want to do?
One of the things that we're gonna do is touch up these, this is one of the big things. So I did start a PowerPoint about space limitations of these data sets. And I have, I haven't put the pictures in, but I got a lot of pictures from Jackie, so as long as they're not kids in them, I'm gonna try to use some of those pictures. So I only have right now, like, nine slides. Do you want me to just cut, well, once the title, eight slides. It's okay if I just go through just quickly what it is on the slide, I won't read it to you or anything, but just. So like, the first one, I just put the construction history, because a lot of people don't know that. You know, when was the last time we had revision? Also, I don't, there's a few things that I was looking for information, I started doing it, like, when did we start taking preschool students? That took a while, so, I'll do it again.
Okay.
And then, I, I thought it would be nice to show the student population growth since we also think, like, every year, how many kids.
The architects I know had some studies and things in their presentations about population growth.
But that's like, was that like predicting? I don't want to predict it, I just want to show.
Yeah, I don't know how far we can go back, so maybe that would be forward.
Yeah, that presentation had to go back fifteen years.
It did, okay. Yeah, it was not, yeah, it was not the eighties.
All right, I'll look back at it, you see. I looked through that, but I didn't look through it recently.
Yeah, I.
Or it could be the demographic study that we had, which was like seven years ago.
Yeah, I don't really want to do the demographic study. I know, I don't really want to do that.
I know, I've seen it somewhere.
We're supposed to be getting another result from the demographic. Wasn't the, I forget what the nonprofit organizations.
So they have your.
Yeah, yeah. Like, we're doing one, right?
Yeah, they, yeah, I.
I've heard something, okay.
All right, so anyway, I thought it'd be good to show student population growth, because that's always something that comes up. And then I had class size recommendations, like what our recommendations are and what the state's guidance and the MAXes. And then I had classroom capabilities, so I actually did the math for kindergarten, that's how fifty square feet per pupil, elementary middle, thirty-six square feet. So it says how many classrooms can fit how many kids. So you guys, oh, look at this later. But I said what the range was from all of them, like, we had twenty-five classrooms available, that's what I wrote. So I wasn't including music and art. And then support service-based needs, like one classroom, you have five specialists, you know, like all the different ones. That parent professionals really don't have a place to take kids to work with them one-on-one, so. And this can, yeah. The modulars, basically, and, and integrated arts, I've just been putting there, because, you know, it's come up a lot about, you know, only having one music, only having one art. And I really like what Nancy said about, so we don't offer a lot of extra stuff for our kids in the school. We don't have all the different things, you know, we don't have shop, we don't have all the different stuff. We just have music, art, world culture when they're in middle school, and then wellness and health when they're in middle school. And so I just wanted to make a point of that, that's really something that we do a good job with, but, and that's why we're taking up the space. And then storage problems, like the, excuse me, I know there's a lot of pictures, like the gym stage, the closets, the chairs, the storage shed.
Did I miss anything really important?
So I guess my question is, what is our goal for the public forum? Are we trying to educate people about our space needs?
I think educate and have dialogue. You know, if people say like, hey, we should be changing the storage shed into a classroom, I mean, we can bring up, like, there's several architects that told us that that's just not possible. You might as well not building that and building the building, it is just not made for it, with the low capacities, because it was built as a shed. You know, to have that discussion, because it's really hard, you know, we get comments in public meetings, you know, we should do this, we should do that, but we never discuss it with anybody. So I guess that's kind of what I was thinking. You guys think?
Yeah, yeah, dialogue back and forth, absolutely, because, I mean, the people tend to do comment, we use it then, and we don't communicate with them.
Right.
So that's what the public forums, oh, sure.
I mean, it's, I hope it could just be a dialogue, you know, like, they have some questions, we have questions, have some, you know, bring up their concerns about, that information they might want to share. I think, too, and I can't find it among all my stuff, but the, all the pie graphs that you had presented before, which is from you, at a meeting, that shows where things have increased. I think it's important, I know we're gonna do it in a mailing, but I think it's important for people to understand where the increases are, and what is in our power to cut or change, and what isn't, too. I just think the more they can understand what happens when we budget.
So you're just about adding information about budget.
Yeah, we should have some kind of, you know, discussion. I just think they need to know as much as we can possibly tell them about things, because I, I hear things in, you know, in town, and it's like, but that's not right, you know? And even how state funding works. I told a couple, I went over and talked to Jess about special ed funding, because I wanted to know more about, Jess, what do we get from the state when it comes to special ed? I was very surprised at how it is funded. And I think just as much information as we can give them.
I guess my concern with having sort of an open forum is that, how can we possibly prepare for them? Like, how can we say, come with any questions, and we will tell you the answer, like, we're oracles, which I don't think we are. And so I, I worry that if we just invite them for an open topic, quit, start quizzing me, that we will either tell them incorrect information, or just say, I'm not sure, we'll have to look this up to every single answer. Like, I don't know if that's really moving the needle anywhere. I do think we should do a specific presentation about special ed funding, sort of while we're talking about budgeting. But that's gonna take a little bit of preparation to get that together. I think that's important. I just, I worry that if we make it too big, like, how could we possibly rein in what is gonna be brought up? Like, I, I don't feel prepared to talk about special education funding today.
So two, so break it out, two different forums, one focusing on space needs, one focusing on budget, in like November, when we're talking about budget anyway?
Yeah, I mean, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm open to public forums. We did try last year to have a budget presentation with a lot more information, I mean, a PowerPoint or whatever. I don't think anyone came that wasn't already gonna come to a meeting. So we can certainly do it again. I'm just, I'm cautious of, like, making, putting a bunch of time into a presentation to cover every topic, and then have no one show up to, to want to discuss.
So if we want to talk about things like special needs or the budget season like that, that we might not have all the information on, or as much as we might to, what about, is there, is there a possibility of getting somebody to the Department of Education to come up at the state level? And sit in during the meeting?
For next, our next meeting? I doubt it.
No, I mean, for a public forum.
I like Nate's idea of splitting, having one space and one budget.
Yeah.
I feel like there's not enough time to do both, or, you know, we had talked about it just being space, that was what we talked about. At least that's, that was my impression.
Yeah. But it kind of did creep in a little bit, too, about, you know, people want to know, where's all the money going?
Yeah.
I think we kind of hiked on that a little bit, too, at that time, but I remember just talking about people spacing.
I guess the reason I bring up some of the other things about where just the money goes is, we probably won't do another one for a while, and we're going into budget season. So by the time, I think, we probably wouldn't do another one in a while. I mean, we weren't talking, we didn't do it every, every month, we were talking about doing it a couple of times during the year.
Yeah, I think, like, last year, we did a full sort of budget presentation, where we talked about the increases, and we did the budget breakdown, showing like, how much of our budget goes to the facilities, how much goes to staff, et cetera. That, but that wasn't until our budget was finalized.
It was like January.
It was, I think, the second meeting, or the first meeting in December, maybe. But like, special ed funding as a topic is not sort of budget dependent. And is worth, I think, sharing before, or in conjunction with budget creation. So I would be in favor of having space limitations September, special ed October, second meeting in October. You know, we obviously have two meetings a month. The first one is our business meeting, and the second is our, whatever we call it here.
Work session.
Work session.
I think you start, I think we do the principal budget decision. And your budget's gonna be starting.
Yeah, we're not gonna have time for another forum before. Is it worth just pulling up the slideshow that you had before? Just, you know? I guess the reason that I, I'm concerned about where the money goes and that coming out is that the tax rate will be coming out, and tax bills will be coming out in December. And not gonna make it any easier, but if we can give them some of that information, I mean, we know why it's going up some.
Yeah.
I mean, we know that. So even just the bullet areas where it's going up, so they know. It's not because here at the school, we decided to go by, you know, some outrageous thing for all the teachers or something, you know, there's, there's a reason. For different, like, what they voted on in March, last March. And, I don't know, I just, I keep remember the selectmen's meeting when people said, when their tax bills came out, if I had just known ahead of time, I would still be upset, but at least I would have known. And I, if you would, could have told us areas that it was gonna go up, again, I wouldn't have liked it, but at least I would have known. And I just feel that we.
Yeah, I get.
As much as we can.
I think that's.
To let them know.
I think that's the intention of a letter. I think my caution about, about relying on a public forum for that is that historically, we just don't have people coming.
True, but we can say we offered it.
True, I mean, we can say we offered a presentation about the budget increases last December. We can say we put it on the Warren article, we had PowerPoints, the deliberative, we had.
At the budget.
Yeah, like, at the municipal budget meetings, like, this is, this has not been a secret, but I just, and I'm not saying that we shouldn't do a public forum. I just, I would caution the utility of that as an information spreading device.
It's really difficult to give people information and not have definitive answers for how it affects them. You know, you're just talking about big, big increases, and your taxes are going up, and they don't know how much, they don't know until they get their tax bill. I don't know where tax rate setting is, and you're really, because you don't have a calendar, where you have an administrative administrator, I don't know if you know or talk to anyone about the forms getting submitted to the state and to the DRA. Ours are done, our books are closed, the forms are submitted, but it can't get sent to both sides, how do they get them submitted? So I don't know when you're even wanting to know what your tax rate is.
Yeah.
That's, that's the difficulty, people want to know what is the thing for me.
Like, we can sort of talk about it in a vacuum of, yes, special education went up one point seven million in last year, or whatever it was, something like that. People was like, okay, why, why do we have to spend money on special education? And then we're just, you know, we come, and then we're sort of spending the whole night, um, looking like we don't have the answers. I think that's what is the idea that's bothering me, is like, if we can't sort of be prepared with the presentation and answers, like, I just, I just don't know what is, would come out. It may not happen until they have their tax bills in their hands.
It's very hard to sort of do, you know, do the warning and the caution, and the, until it's mailed to your house, and you have something that you have to pay by X date, then it's, then it's usually when people come out and say, what the heck's going on? Why is this so high? Why did you tell me? That's the point, that you get that feedback. But trying to get them here ahead of getting that, it's, that's the no problem, medication.
Yeah.
But I think you're on my track of getting out as much as you can ahead of time is a great idea.
Could we, could we work in a recap of, of your presentation from last year, like, the beginning of, let's say, whatever the October meeting we get, or we begin to hook up, to begin the budget? Take fifteen minutes and just say, just as a reminder, here's what happened last year, and now we're starting again.
And hopefully it's not the same.
But I agree that we've already been through this, like, three or four times, including the delivery session, including, like, all these meetings, we've already done this. And so maybe we can just, if it's on YouTube, like, here's one, here's one, here's one, we've done this, suffice it to us.
I guess, I know it's hard.
Yeah.
But it's one of those things to me that just because it's hard doesn't mean you don't try to do it. And if two people walk through the door, then there's two people that we've given the information to, but then may say, hey, I went to this, and did you know this? And so, you know, and those two people might not be our people, and, you know, at least, and that does happen. Yeah, and I guess it's just, I, you know, oh, they're trying to hide things, they're not, you know, they're not telling us things. I think if we can try to be as transparent as we can, I do understand what you're saying, too, Kimba. I mean, you know, in my la-la land, we could have tea and crumpets and just have a nice little conversation about education in Deerfield, and hey, what do you, you know, what are some suggestions, you know, whatever, you know?
So would you feel like if we did something like in an October meeting, before the meeting started, well, before actually even getting the meeting, if we re-showed the presentation from last year that we made, right, for the delivery session, and said, you know, you all had a tax increase last year, we all know that, here's why, just as a reminder, we already talked about this, but we'll do it again? Do you have, open it up for questions about this, about, about where last year's budget came from, or whatever? Twenty minutes, thirty minutes, I don't know, if two people are here, it would be faster. Would, and then move on to our meeting, would that accomplish what you envisioned? Or are you talking about, does that get across what you're hoping for? We would be missing tea and crumpets, but.
I think it would be a start.
I think the other thing that I will caution is how we're answering questions. I think, and maybe we can add this to the agenda or something, but like, one person answering doesn't necessarily mean you're speaking for the entire board. I think that's, there are things that people will bring up that we have not talked about as a board, and the board does not have a position on it. So if someone says, I think we should do a bouncy house outside instead of the modulars, one of us can't say, no, that's, we're not doing that, because the board hasn't discussed it, the board doesn't have a position on that. So I think that's a complicating factor of a public forum, is that we, an individual cannot speak on behalf of the board unless the board has taken a position on the particular issue.
You know, what might be a good idea to do that is, as people are talking, have somebody, a last slide, be writing down suggestions, we don't have to comment on, or, I mean, we could, if we, if it's something that we discussed, we could, but, and then if it gets to the end, say, these are all the suggestions that you guys gave us, and we will be looking at them.
Yeah, that's fine, I think we just have to be careful about giving definitive answers on behalf of the board. If that makes sense.
Oh, yeah, that's why, that's why we don't have a conversation a lot of times during public hearing.
Right. Okay. So do we want to have just space limitations in September? Or do we want to do?
I think it'd be better to just have one thing, personally. But I do like the idea of in October, doing like maybe special ed or.
I think we do need to educate people about special ed funding.
Jess has said she's, it was actually when I left on the other day, and she said, I said, we're gonna have, you know, a meeting with people, and she goes, when is it? I probably could come, you know, and so she is more than willing to come and share in. And so she is more than willing to come and share information.
Yeah, I mean, I do think that would be impactful, just so the board, even for the board, to, to know sort of, when we're talking about this, why, you know, is this budget going up so much? Can we control any of this? What, how does the reimbursement fee score?
Yeah. Okay, so how do I prepare this PowerPoint? Is that something that you put up on a drive and then people can comment on it?
No.
Have one other person look at it.
Yeah.
Have another person look at it and that's it?
Let's see where to finish and bring it to the board and then we would look at it together, how do we, like, if we're doing this next meeting.
All right. Would you guys want me to show it?
Well, who else on your, who's on your building committee?
Me and I.
Yeah, I think as the members of the building committee or whatever that committee is called. Basicities committee. If you guys wanna sort of lead the presentation, then the discussion, I think that makes the most sense.
You like the, the previous, like presentations, like from the architect, there's stuff that the board has already approved about this, this board, but the board has approved, I'd say, a couple years ago. So if you use those, it's already done, it's already, like, approved by the board. Those would be easily kind of taken and re, and reprojected. That might save people a lot of time and then, you know, it's approved by the board, so. In terms of like accuracy and all that stuff, that may be a good source for information of the file that you use.
So I will plan to make a Facebook post about this, focusing on space limitations for September. If that works for everybody. Saying, we're back to the drawing board, people. Let's, let's get together and chat.
Let's go to it.
Can I also go on the Tom looks like?
Yeah. Yeah. It means like a flyer? Sure, why not?
Because I, I feel that a lot of people would actually.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good idea.
I can put it on the DCS website too.
Ooh, okay. I don't know, pressure, good thing I have a Canvas subscription, I can just whip up a flyer.
You have access to more in Canvas with, so if you do any kind of under yours, they could be free, you know, more access.
It's free.
It's free, yeah. Wow.
And then I know you're like, yeah.
Oh, my God, I'm playing Canvas all the time. Okay, wow, good to know.
It's just whatever you do in there is gonna be tied to your board email address, so.
The scandalous flyers, I'm like.
It just stays with that account, so God number two.
Oh, I see.
Leave the board, you wouldn't have access to your flyers anymore, just so you know.
Okay, well, maybe, maybe we should offer that, say, you should run for school boards, you have a free Canvas, people. You're only one. Okay, any other planning that we need to do? Do you feel confident?
Yes.
Okay.
If me and I are gonna, it's, we're gonna rock it. You just wait. We are already doing SAU budget, so if you need any research done or have questions, can you get them to me as soon as possible? Can you get the board? I'll try to check this out. And it's okay, like, to, is it okay for me to show it, like Kristen? Um, you should just put things, your names and then, or to both be at the same time, you first and, okay.
Happy to look at it, anything.
I just wanna make sure there aren't any inaccuracies about the school, so, you know.
Okay. Well. Board reports, PTO update, would you like to give an update?
Sure. So we're already off to a great start, I think. We had our welcome back waffles for the teachers on Monday before we did the back to school barbecue, so that made for a good day. And even though we brought it inside for the rain, I still think it was incredible, like, there were a lot of people that came out. So I think overall, it was really great. We really are grateful for those cooking and helping us with those. I personally loved it inside, just to put that up.
Yeah, I know, it was easier.
Be more prepared with fans next year, if that has to happen.
I told everyone that you and Brian brought us fans and I'm like, what? They did that for you?
I don't know, did you do that? Cause I think I did.
I did that too.
Well, I definitely got the extension cord.
What's blowing on you?
Yeah, that's cute.
It was a little warm, but yeah, it was all right. It was good. You never know outside, you know, it could have been even warmer humid outside.
You were dry, we were all dry. Well, besides the sweat.
So we have a coffee cart we're planning coming up. We planned that for Friday, the thirteenth. So that might be a good day to be here, a bad day to be here. It's not a full moon, though, I did double check.
Okay.
And we have our catalog sale that's already started. It should go home in fact, for the sales live, so like, some people have already started coming out there. And of course, our townwide yard sale's coming up, October twelfth, Saturday, October twelfth, just one day. And I've heard there's a whole lot going on in town that day. I heard Brimfield is at the fair around. And also there is a farmer's market. So it's going to be quite busy in Deerfield that day. We are not doing the donation site this year, so we will not be here at school. We're just strictly selling the spots on the map this year. It's a lot. I think we'll do the donation site every other year to kind of spread it out a little bit. And then Heritage Commission just did a donation yard sale thing as well, so. Hopefully, we're twenty, get their stuff down.
What time is the yard sale?
We usually say eight to three AM. But since it's your discretion, I mean, if it's at your house, you can put your stuff out whatever time you want.
Gotcha, we're all gotcha, but here at the school, it's.
Yeah, we won't do anything at school.
Oh, oh, sorry, did you just say that? I was sorry. I was entering it into the calendar.
It's quite a big undertaking.
Yeah.
And it's a lot of stuff and if we don't sell it all, I have to get it all out.
Yeah.
It just becomes a massive one on the board. So I figured this year we would take a break and hopefully make sure we'll do it again and we'll have some great stuff and it'll all sell. It's almost like metal. And I think that's it for right now. Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Exec Board.
Exec Board had a meeting this summer because we had to approve a couple positions. And it was for the preschool.
SAU preschool program.
SAU preschool program. It was in there. That's right, we weren't there. So, yeah, so there's, they, we had that, was the main purpose of it, but also had it. We have to do a superintendent evaluation. And we, one, the chair of the executive committee kind of put something, yeah, I think it came out on the drive. I think it says on the drive. But we're gonna talk about it at the next executive board meeting because we weren't supposed to add anything more. So it was like, okay, let's discuss it at the next meeting, but I guess we're supposed to be a superintendent. So once I had more information on this, I'll share it with you.
It's gonna be executive board drive, the back sample.
Okay, that's probably, all right.
Carrie.
If you want, if you guys want me to put the sample draft in, if the board, if you wanna wait until it's worked out more.
I don't even see it yet.
We had a model a couple years ago, we've been through this a couple times. It's just similar to that.
It seems, I wasn't there, but the, what she brought was not the model that we're currently using. It's a checklist reading scale. So I did share, I put in the drive, the team's board has a model that's written out in policy that mimics what we do. So I included that, just for informational purposes, and I don't know where the board will land, but we're starting.
Yeah, of course. And if anyone has comments or suggestions, just let Nancy know and she can bring them to the executive board meeting.
Yeah, that's, that's good. We have a couple all board meetings coming up too.
Yes, really important that you're there for the two October meetings. Because you have to book forums and for the SAU budget.
We have a meeting every Wednesday of October, every October.
Yeah.
So mark your calendars. Every other one is here and every other one is in Pembroke.
Well, it's only the two all board ones that we need somebody else to come to, right?
Yeah, but there's two all board in October and then we have our board meetings in October. So it ends up being every meeting.
It is all, it's in the all board in October.
So the entire board goes to Pembroke every other weekend in October?
Well, the entire SAU board, so our board and all the other boards in the district, go to Pembroke two times in October.
Right, so what time?
Five thirty.
Where? The library.
Oh, it's usually the cafeteria.
Yeah, we've gone back and forth. The agenda's not done yet. But the meetings are posted on the website. The calendar for the whole SAU is on the website. So all, if you were interested in any of the other meetings too. Yes. We'll get you more information closer.
I would highly recommend that people look at the SAU budget before our first all board meeting. It is a good place to go and ask questions, but they go through it and say, this is the executive board? Sign off on, do you approve, yes or no? So I would be prepared in advance. That's my best advice. Anything else from the exec board? Okay. Principals report.
So this will cover just a few highlights from the summer up until today, September fourth. So we had a successful summer program here, a Title I and our special education summer programming. Title I program that ran similarly to last year where the group of kids were in the gym with all kinds of activities and fun things to do. And then the teachers that were hired to tutor came and got small groups of kids for forty-five minute blocks, depending on what their needs were. So that worked out nicely. And then we also had our second year of kindergarten camp, run by, Mary Pickman was the teacher this summer. And that's when we just have a few kindergartners in that might need a little school experience before they come to school. Find out what a cubby looks like and where the cafeteria is and how to sit in a circle and read a story with the teacher. So that was also very successful. We did a lot of summer curriculum work this summer. Our Andrea Clinch and Amanda Przabelski worked with grade level teams from K all the way up to, all the way up to eight. On writing, they provided training on simplify writing, which is a comprehensive structured writing program that teaches grammar, handwriting and spelling in the context of authentic writing pieces. All grade levels K through eight will be using simplify writing. This year, we all, we have subscriptions, we were able to get it through the SR grant. And teachers are loving the layout. There's a whole intervention part of the program. And it's, it's been, I, we just met with the OT today, talked about the handwriting portion for our little ones. So it's a very comprehensive program and the teachers are very excited to use it. Last October, I'm sorry, last spring, we had a PD day where the, we worked on writing across the curriculum. So as you know, all of our social, all of our middle school teachers teach a unit of social studies. So they are involved, even if it's a math teacher or a science teacher, they are involved in helping students with writing. So in addition to the work done on simplify writing, Jamie Oddly and our new math specialist, Danielle Sands, worked with teachers K through five on Eureka Math Squared, preparing and getting ready to implement this next iteration of Eureka Math. Middle school team members also got together and worked on updating the academic probation procedures, which was in the handbook. And also planning for advisory and magnet. That work came out of the NMS conference that we send our middle school teachers to. They brought back some, some things about advisory that they wanted to, to change and implement into our advisory program. So that, they're working on, we, so we took some time to do some planning and we're off to a good start with advisory. And magnet. Just to keep the board abreast, we, our kindergarten update, our, all three classes are at eighteen. So that's where we're at right now. August twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh, all staff returned, our staff returned, all staff returned on Monday, I'm sorry. Certified staff returned on Monday, all staff returned on Tuesday. And thank you to the PTO and to the community that donated to the wonderful Welcome Back Waffles. It was the second year that we've done that and I think this year was even better than last year except for the electrical outlets that went out every second, every, like, we plug in the crock pot, duh, I'm pulling the crock pot, oh, back up.
It was not like crock pot.
But it was very successful and hopefully maybe next year we'll give a little more boost of electricity to that area. So we're gonna do it a third year. A big welcome to our new staff on August thirteenth. Our, was new faculty orientation. This has been for quite a few years, at least four or five years, at least that I know of. Where one day, all new staff on the whole SAU meet at Pembroke Academy. Amy Parkinson runs the, that, that orientation, talks about all things MLP and Okta and all the platforms that we use, Alma and competency based grading and all the things that they need to know. And then the next day, the second day is dedicated to all new staff going back to their specific schools. So I had, we had our new staff back here on August fourteenth. And so Hannah Bon Giovanni, Giovanni, excuse me, is teaching fifth grade. Maggie Gilbert, fourth grade. Danielle Sands is our fourth through eighth math specialist. And Janine Tranpa is our kindergarten special education case manager. She was gonna be K one, but the caseload is really high right now in kindergarten. So Terry Goddard, another case manager, is gonna take on first grade and she's also going to second grade. So Janine is focusing primarily on kindergarten. We also have two contracted employees who have made a home here at DCS. Melissa Pazdin is the school psychologist and she's got one of the call offices at the top of the stairs. And then Olivia Harding is a speech and language pathologist. And they've been such, they, Melissa just started yesterday and has already made her mark on the building. And Olivia was able to join us during our new, our welcome back. And they just became, sometimes contracted employees, you just don't know, but they certainly have become part of our DCS team already and it's wonderful to have them. We do have one new para professional who joined us this year. Samantha Corson is a para professional. Currently, we do have four openings for para educators in, in the building. Including another para opening in kindergarten that we need to fill. So the other new staff that joined us, Eve Frizzella has joined us in the kitchen. She's part of our kitchen staff this year. It's wonderful to have her. And then a few staff updates, just to keep the board up on, on the updates that happen. Amanda Przabelski is our, going to be our K to three reading specialist. She moved from K one case manager to reading specialist position. Sarah Potter moved from fourth grade to a fourth grade special education case manager position. Matt Ferguson is teaching fourth grade this year. He's taught all grades. I'm sure if you've been here long enough, you know what grades he's taught. I think everything but kindergarten, if I remember correctly. If I remember him highlighting, even in middle school, he even taught middle school. And then Danielle Morris and Gabby Drown are two middle school, they're two special education case managers. And they will be, Gabby had been in fourth grade and she's gonna be working in seventh grade, primarily middle school, but primarily seventh and eighth grade, and as well as Danielle Moore. She's primarily sixth grade, but has a few students in other grades as well. We only have one intern this year. Her name is Gabby Whitaker. She's a nurse intern, actually. So she'll be with us for the first half of the year and then in January, she flies off to another location. Sometimes we get a music and art intern, but we haven't gotten any information about that yet. So some dates, August twenty-sixth, we had our back to school barbecue in open house. And Nicole spoke about that. It was wonderful how we were able to pivot and it worked out wonderfully. And I liked it too, by the way. I love air conditioning in the kitchen. Maybe that's how we'll get air conditioning in the kitchen. Cause our poor ladies, they do, oh, they're so hot, you thought you were hot. August twenty-eighth, our first, was the first day for students. It was great to have everybody back in the building. We did have our first fire drill today and Chief Captain, Captain. Captain Dubianski was very impressed. We were, we were out in a flash and he said it was the best fire drill he's seen here in a long time. They were quiet as church mice and it was great. Our fall sports have begun, so we have volleyball, cross country and soccer for our fall sports. We have a couple of home games next week for, for soccer. We have an away game or an away match for volleyball. And then a cross country meet next week, starting next week. So we are in the middle of benchmarking for iReady. We're, so that's for some people who've been here for a while. We used to do star testing and now we use iReady district wide. So we've been doing some benchmarking. We benchmark our students all from first through eighth grade. We do our kindergartners in the winter benchmarking, which is in January. And we've started our PLCs and our win. And we've started our PLCs and our win rotations are getting ready to start. So, we are busy, busy, busy here. And then, just some upcoming dates for you. Tomorrow, Thursday, is instrumental rental night for our, for our students that are getting instruments. That's at six o'clock. And then, picture day is not until Wednesday, October ninth. It's late this year. So, just some updates for you for some dates. That's all.
So, writing, is that replacing Lucy?
It is.
And is the spelling piece of it enough to replace foundations?
No, no.
So, they'll still have foundations?
That's a good question, yeah. Actually, I will, as part of, I will, even if it's separate from what you wanna, we will have somebody come do a presentation on Simplify Writing so you can see, see the work that's being done.
Awesome. You said good things about it and it's pretty good.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Great. Thank you so much.
You're so welcome.
Curriculum review. Cool. So, that's a lot of your customers. So, Nancy and I have been, well, there have been two meetings. So, anyway, we kinda have our opinion, but we just wanted to kinda lay the land for you guys to hear it and make a decision. So, EPA grants for five million dollars between Deerfield and Pembroke. It's for twenty-five buses. Deerfield gets ten. And so, our share is two hundred thousand a bus. The buses themselves cost around three hundred to three fifty thousand. So, you see it already. That's a lot more money. The technology's good. It's been there for electric buses seven to eight years. So, actually, people feel pretty good, pretty confident about the technology. The challenges of this is that you would need to create, you would need to have a charging location for your buses. So, you would have to bring electric in or if you had separate solar to charge them, but you'd have to have a way of charging them. Coordinate with the electric utility. You have to maintain the buses. Hire and train drivers. If it seems to be separate drivers from Dale. Maintenance of buses and charging stations and then, a place to store the buses. So.
Insurance.
Yeah, I didn't even, didn't even think about that. Yeah, insurance. No, they didn't. You're right.
I mentioned it.
So, the way the person in Pembroke who's been running the committee, the way she was thinking about going about this was, because obviously, there's a lot of money for us to all of a sudden have to, you know, put out to get, to get the buses. Is there's this company called Highland. They have companies, our offices all around the country. They've done this in like thirty, forty places around the country with other schools. The closest office is in Beverly. And what they do is they partner with the schools to help implement the project. So, what they would do is you would set, you'd have a ten to fifteen-year contract with them. They would acquire the buses. They do EPA paperwork. They create the infrastructure. You know, just however, whatever you decide to do it, that physical equipment. Coordinate with utility. If you need to do land development, place to put the buses. They coordinate the maintenance. The way they do it is we pay for it, they reimburse. If a battery needs to be replaced, they do it. The average replacement time's about eight years. And the chargers are based on the size of the route. So, they would look at, okay, where are you going? How long's the company, how long's it taking to do? And that would be determining the size of that. And that, one of the big things with EPA is for every bus that you get, there has to be a bus that's scrapped, completely destroyed. So, you get the bus out of that gear. And they would supply those buses that would be scrapped, which is kinda strange because it doesn't mean they necessarily come from Hampshire. They could be, you know, scrapped.
Or coming up the road. They're probably already off.
Yeah. I think they already bought a bunch of them and scrapped them. So, how it would work is you'd enter into contract with them for ten to fifteen years. They would get the five million dollar grant from EPA and they'd buy the buses, develop the infrastructure. They said it typically takes about a year for them to do it. We would pay Highland a fixed monthly rate, but not until the buses are up and running. So, we wouldn't be paying them anything for a year. And Nancy and I were talking about this because this wasn't in the notes that they sent them. But I swear that she said it's typically about twenty-five thousand, forty thousand a year that you would be paying for these buses.
For what?
No, for, for contracts. That's a big question. So, I don't know. Yeah. But I thought it was for the whole, I thought it was for the whole. And I don't know what that means like for Pembroke and for Deerfield or just Deerfield, you know, Beverly, no. So, what, just a couple of details and I'll tell you what, if you wanna do it with a next step. The buses fully charged have a hundred to a hundred and twenty mile range, but that's about half in winter because of the cold. The electric service is in Highland's name. So, in other words, if you have buses and you set up a place where they can charge, it's Highland is the one that owns that. And then, we pay a fixed cost for charging their vehicles. I don't know if that's up for, you know, that might be up for negotiation. I'm not really sure, but that's kinda what I was thinking. What was interesting is that you can schedule the charging of the buses at lower rate times because it's always, you know, like, wait, it's like midnight or whatever. That's a real low rate time. You can, there's software where you can have this bus charging and that bus charging. And you can also actually, during peak periods, which is a time when we're usually having, using the buses because that's usually lunchtime, dinner time, breakfast, like dinnertime. You can sell back the electricity for, for, get some money back. So, there's, I guess, where you can kinda, let me feel it. Okay. Buses are made by main bus companies, so they wouldn't look any different to the kids. It would be the same thing. So, it's three main bus companies and that's where they would get it from. But one of the big questions that came up was, well, what happens when a bus, you know, like, for fifteen years? What do you do? You have to replace all ten buses at one time? Like, how do you do that? There wouldn't be a grant at that point. The cost might go down, but it might not. Who knows? Because they're obviously charging more for electric buses and for regular buses of two hundred thousand. The electric buses are like three fifty. So, if we are interested in going the next step, just to see what it would be, Highland will come and review our routes to determine what size batteries we would need for the buses. They would look at possible locations to store and charge the buses. Don't bring up in a sec. We would need to know when our contract with Dale's up because you have to figure out, well, is the contract up and tell them for it to take the place? Or do we have a contract still for two years? I can't remember. Is it a year that we have left? I'm not really sure.
I think we do, but I'm.
Time flies.
We proved it when I was on executive board.
So, two.
Maybe not, though. It could have been an all-board meeting. No, I don't remember. I was there, but I don't, okay.
Anyway, I'm not, not really sure.
Yeah, I don't.
And then, so based on that, Highland gives you a projection of what you would do yearly. I did put in budget. I kinda like was looking at a lot of different things. I'm not exactly sure. But it looks like we spent about a million on transportation. That includes everything. As it was spoken, special ed, yeah. Our default budget goes about a million and a half. Okay. We would have to, we would have to hire our own drivers and train them. Like, so that's not the whole thing. It's not just that, that, it would be hiring drivers. And then, there's the whole issue of where would we put the buses? So, ten buses, you know, I don't know. I was wondering about the piece of property on Stage Road. I was wondering, but I noticed they flattened the area up behind the ball field. There's an area there, but I don't think it would fit ten buses. But I don't know, I don't know what, like, along here, how close we are to our property line. Are we real close? But there's no doubt in there. Right. So, Stage Road is probably about the only option. And then, I don't, I don't know, like, it'd be nice if we could set it up where we actually have solar and we're charging the buses with solar. Because then, you're really doing the best for climate change. Because otherwise, you know, it displaces the diesel, but in some cases, it costs more than diesel in winter. It puts a bit of charge on the battery. We had a lot of very, very intelligent people at the same thing, right? That were like, really knew their stuff about electricity. They were from, I guess, the.
Energy Committee.
Energy Committee, whatever. Yeah, very, very, very good. So, I guess, so that's what we're bringing to you. The next step would be to contact them and say, "Okay, this is where we would put it. This is our bus routes." And then, they will come back to us with that. But is it something that we even wanna do? You know, like, we can't really figure out how much money we would save or how much we would spend until we know what it would be on a yearly basis.
Unless Pembroke reviewed this last night as well in front of their board. And somebody mentioned the desire for PO to be generated in November.
Well, but they do have a, they do have an extension. So, EPA is set up where you can ask for an extension. And that's the other thing is, I mean, I'm assuming that if we were entering into contract of this, we would help sort of, and we did tell them that. The other thing is, all the schools that they've worked with own their own buses. We would be the first time they'd ever be doing it with Pembroke and Deerfield that do not own their own buses. So, we're starting like.
That adds a lot of cost.
A lot, yeah. And, you know, training. I mean, we'd have to have training on bus drivers. We'd have to have new employees. Like, I don't know what that would, what that would cost.
The number you said, twenty thousand per year.
Twenty-five to forty, twenty-five to forty.
Seems like it can't be just for, like, that for ten buses?
That's just their contract. That's not for the drivers. It's not for the drivers or anything.
It's just for the buses.
And it's also, so, we have a grant for five million, but they said it's probably more like ten million.
Although, don't forget that's for both Pembroke and.
Right.
The grants is, or the cost is?
The cost.
So, the grant's like about half the cost of the year.
So, then there's the other. And, yeah.
But the other thing I didn't mention is they also said, though, that there's a, through the infrastructure bill, there's another tax incentive that they would get, like, given this. I think they've done a lot of.
I think they have, but I still, there's still something with the whole funding of it that I don't see the numbers played out. And that's what I was going to ask at the next meeting, but, yeah, the next meeting.
Oh, yeah, that's true. We decided not to go ahead.
No, but I have to talk to you about that because I meant that. Neither. That's it. I don't really, yeah, but. I mean, so, when this first came up and Ellen said, "Hey, somebody come with me." And I said, "Sure, I'll come with you," just to hear it, it was never with the intention on my part that this was something we were definitely going to do. And, yeah, but I, there were rumblings out there that we were gonna do this and everything. No, but, so, can, should we, can we share our opinions of it or can we not do that?
Yeah, I think it's the committee, the board's free recommendation.
Yeah, no, no. In theory, in what, in a perfect world, would I love to see us start going electric and get rid of diesel buses and all that. To me, the cost is way more than we can even begin to think about asking the town for. Because for me, I want our money currently, unless we had a whirlwind of money, what is going to be the most direct use for students and their education? And I personally, if we had that kind of money around, I'd put it somewhere else. So, my opinion after sitting there, nice idea, this is not the time for Deerfield to do it. And we have other things we gotta talk about. I mean, we've got, you know, we're gonna be doing high school again and another, you know, with contracts with that. We're going to, there's just too many other things that, in my opinion, are more important to Deerfield right now. And if the grants are out there now and they're going well, the grants are going to, in my opinion, continue to be out there.
May depend on elections, but, yeah.
For sure. Yeah, but anyway, but I guess, to me, it's in theory, yes. In reality?
Yeah, I, I don't disagree. I think in an environment where, as a fellow commenter said earlier, Pembroke cut three million dollars from their budget. And, you know, there's a lot of discourse about whether or not we even should approve a seventy thousand dollar increase for the paras. Like, to me, this would be an incredibly tone deaf thing to put on a warrant and say, "Can we have five million dollars for electric buses?" So, I, so I, I want, I just, I wanna put out there my thoughts. We don't know what this would cost us. We don't know if this would cost us more. We pay a million dollars, almost a million and a half on transportation right now.
Yeah.
So, wouldn't we be paying more? I don't really know. I don't know that we have enough information yet to really make that determination. There are things that stick with me that can be huge problems. Can we even use Stage Road? I don't know. The Warren article said for a school facility, right? So, I don't know. Is putting buses there, is that part of a school facility? I don't know if that would work. I don't know if we wanna get into the whole having bus drivers, training them, paying for them, having, you know, additional employees.
Finding them.
Finding them. We'd have to have like a dispatch. We'd have to have administrative coordinator. So, there's all that as well. So, I have problems with that. But I, but I still am not sure that money, oh, and then, the other thing is what happens when the buses are, you know, good anymore? Because we're not like, a lot of fleets are like, "Whoa, we'll put two buses in." And we're gonna put two buses in, then actually, two buses in. And then, that's doable to just immediately put ten buses in. The other thing is, we don't have to do ten buses right away. We can do a smaller amount. I, I don't know. I just feel like I'm not sure that we have all the information completely safe. No, let's not do it yet.
There's more there.
Yeah.
I have Pembroke with some.
My question, buses being fully charged have a hundred to a hundred and twenty mile range. In the winter, this is halved. Now, it's starting to rely on solar for charging buses in the winter. Is that more difficult in winter time for solar to?
I don't know.
Be, be strong.
I don't know. We can ask her. I think it'll be okay.
What is, how many, how many miles of roads do we have in Deerfield?
Well, the way, the way we would do it now is we would not be turning it with solar. We would be hooking up the utility. And we would be getting our electricity from the coal or wherever it is. That's the way we're gonna do it now. I was just thinking it'd be nice if maybe in the future or something like that, you could do it. But I don't know. You'd also, you're also charging up batteries. So, how long do the batteries last?
How long does it take to charge them?
It didn't sound like it was that long. They didn't exactly say how long.
They were saying like, when they have, they come back from their morning run.
Yeah, you can charge them.
Charge them.
And they said, then you could also use them for, if you're taking the kids to sports events or whatever. You would bring a bus back, charge it in the afternoon. But they also made it sound like you might, you might wanna still have a diesel bus around just in case.
Especially if, I mean, you run out of power and you left the bus in the wintertime and you get a front door.
Yeah, they were paying to tow electric buses. No, I mean, I think the, the whole point of knowing the routes and figuring that out, they, that's.
It's all part of it.
Because they know that with the winter that it's half. They know that. They would be, they would be putting the, the correct sized battery to the bus that you would need for whatever you do this. So, they might not all be the same. So, I guess, I'm really sorry.
Okay, so, if they retire the buses, can you say something about in eight years or ten years? No?
Well, they said, they said the batteries typically last about eight years. They would pay to have the batteries redone because we have a ten to fifteen year contract. So, they would replace the batteries. Problem is, is after the fifteen year contract, would you do any buses that are maybe no longer viable?
So, are the buses bad or is it just the battery?
Yeah, I don't know. That's a good, I was thinking about that later and I'm not sure. Yeah.
All one size buses? Do they have special education buses?
Yes, they do have special education buses. So, you, the bus that you decide on can be whatever you need.
Oh, that's it.
You can have a special education smaller one, whatever it is that you need.
How many buses do we have right now?
One, one special education.
No, I mean.
Oh, six. We have six buses.
DCS.
Four DCS. And then, I think there's a two, two round buses for high school, yeah.
And that's the other thing. I mean, they put in the grant for ten, but it doesn't mean you have to get ten buses. You can get what you need.
Yeah, I mean, I think my biggest hesitation is just the hiring of people. Like, it would, it's not just hiring bus drivers. It's hiring someone to train the bus drivers or sending them or paying for their training, their CDL licenses. I think, you know, Dale obviously has problems hiring and this is their business. So, I think if there were a lot of people who wanted to drive the bus, they would be scooped up by Dale. Yeah, I mean, unless we paid them more and offered them full-time benefits, which is a lot of the issues with Dale. Like, they don't, they may not be able to give people the benefits that they're looking for. So, to me, that just is dollar signs of, you know, yeah, sure, I bet we could find eight drivers if we're offering a hundred thousand dollars a year with full benefits. But I think I would be concerned too, though, if this, you know, at the end of this, would you have the bus companies go back to, you know, if you need it? By then, I would assume that Dale is set, they're not gonna flush with extra drivers to say, "Hey, sure, we've got, we can get you six drivers and start transporting again next year whenever you, whenever you're ready." And they would have to, their company would adjust to.
Whenever you, whenever you're ready, I think they would have to, their company would adjust to using all the buses that he would.
It's, it'd be nice if it was something that Dale could do, you know, and I'm not saying they're interested, or, but it's like, they bought the, you know, it's like.
Right, like if they want to.
Dale the money, get them the buses, you know.
Well, you can do that, but, the way it's set up under BPA grant is that you can do an agreement with a company, a third party. But, they, they have to have a contract for five years, it's just five years, and then when you do, like, you just got the grant and help pay for all these buses and then they're going to have to five years. Contract for five years, so, that's, I think.
I just, I, my personal opinion is, we hear a lot in this town about needs versus wants. And to me, this is not, like, of course, we have a need to bus our students. Um, and whether, you know, whether or not we're getting those needs met is another discussion, but I don't, I don't see this as a, as a need. At this point, when we're struggling to sort of get anything approved. But, you're welcome to disagree with me, as always.
What are the next steps we need to do?
I think we'll need to, we'll want to continue down this path and meet with them and give them the bus routes and look at a place, that, that's the next step if we want to continue. So, I guess we've come to you looking to see, do you want to continue or not? You're not making any decision about going with it, it's just to get more information. But if you think it's a waste of time, yeah, I'm with you.
You sounded like you were saying that these, these numbers are potentially very questionable? Um, or you said you weren't sure how much it was actually going to cost us, since I think we said.
We wouldn't have that. I don't know that, because they won't, they won't give you the number of what the contract will cost until, I mean, it makes sense. They need to know what the bus routes are, and they need to know where you would keep your buses, because.
And how much they're investing in our infrastructure.
Right, and I mean, they're, I mean, they're willing to, if you need land cleared to put the charging stations up for the buses, I mean, they're willing to do that, obviously.
At a cost.
At a cost, so that's why they need to see where you're going to put it, right?
Yeah, I mean, I think we would even, and I'm not sure about the training of bus drivers, they might do that, like, they might?
I can't remember.
I can't remember, but I can. Um, I wouldn't even feel comfortable having them look at stage road until we have asked our local council if we could even utilize stage roads for that purpose. But I'm positive.
I mean, this is pretty interesting, how long did you spend, this was one meeting you had with them?
We had two meetings.
We had, this was one meeting with Highland, and then there's a meeting before that, but it was just.
Yeah, just the representatives from Pembroke and representatives from Deerfield. And we just, the woman that's the chairperson of it just kind of filled us in more on it. Because, I mean, I knew nothing going into it, so, um, she just kind of filled us in, and then we got Highland to come at our last meeting, and they gave more of a presentation.
I don't know that it leads into your decision, um, but we had our board meeting last night with Pembroke, and they're anxious to hear what you're thinking. Because it was, you know, we were really trying to do economy scale and have partnership, and the direction, the reason that the board approved applying for the grant was because this round had a lot more money than there will be available in the future. So they kind of wanted to get in on this pool of money. But the direction was clear that if it needs to be committee work, and there's a whole lot of questions that need to be answered before we would make any commitment. And the board last night seemed to indicate that if there, like you were just talking about, if there are going to be costs, we cannot put anything on the Warren article mark here. Not going to come close to recovering from what we lost, never mind to ask for any addition on it. I think the impression that the board was left was there would be costs occurring.
That's totally true, I mean, I mean, we haven't done the math, so we don't know how it balances out with what we're paying for right now, but.
I, yeah, and even if it does balance out in a certain number of years.
Oh, I was just thinking right away, like, you start, you're not paying them a million and a half a year. You're paying for, you're still paying the contract cost, you're paying for electricity, and you're paying for your drivers.
And putting away money, like, we use the fire trucks and. I can't imagine that it would be, like, less. Quite frankly, especially because, I don't know if this includes our special education, but I doubt they can satisfy all of our special education transportation needs. Well, the difficulty, when you, we always establish routes, and we always give our information and our addresses to the bus company. The reason you have all these boutique transportation companies is because we then add kids, add and take away all over the year, and call Dale and say, well. We've got, you've got, you've got the bus you needed, you've got the boots, but we can't now take these five more kids that have popped up. And we start making phone calls to other companies. So, if we had done special ed bus, and we mapped the routes for that, and had five kids come in that were going all over the state, we would have to hire a couple. Anyway, so, there's a lot to think about.
Oh, you're talking about ones that are going to, like, different schools.
Yes.
At a district, yeah. At a district, yeah.
At a moment's notice, yeah, that was what. Um, what say the board?
It feels like the grade is not big enough to come close to covering the costs.
I agree, I would love for it to, I mean, I personally would be interested in pursuing it, I just can't ask people to spend more time on this. But I think the reality of us putting it on a Warren article is next to nothing unless it was going to save us a million dollars the first year.
I don't feel very optimistic about the case.
No.
I think it's, um, interesting, you know, you guys put in time into it, but I don't think it's, 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 I think.
Yeah.
Well, I definitely don't think it's going to cost money, it's, I definitely agree with you on that, I'm just not, I don't, I feel like I don't know for sure.
Right. Thinking, if Pembroke's planning to go to one more meeting, and sixteen, and get, try to get more answers, and then come back and talk about it for more time. I think that's a fair.
You wish.
Would you want to do one more please, or one more round? If there was any sort of indication to do that, it would be close to balancing out, or even saving money, and I think that I would love to hear about that. It looks rather intimidating, the feeling is that it's going to cost money. I agree that our, that our town's not ready for that.
Well, I think that the fact that we would be the first school district that they tried to implement this grant with that didn't own those buses, is, I'm not sure they know what they're getting into. You know, they come into a school district that says, well, we don't do this here.
Never done it.
Okay, come, zero diesel buses, zero drivers.
Yeah.
Exactly, GP White Building, we did, and local drivers. Bubas?
Yeah.
That's right.
Okay, doesn't cancel us.
They have two boys, those are drivers, and.
Okay, so I'll go to one more meeting, and is there specific questions I wrote down, you guys, about, uh, bad bus versus bad battery? Like, the one, training the bus drivers?
Clarifying, I think, oh, that's what I think what you meant when you said the bus is needs to be, the bus goes with the battery, yeah, with the longevity of the bus, yeah.
It's a bus, but how many, that's going to include a battery.
I did see some scuttle on Facebook during this initial discussion about safety, like, bus, electric vehicle fires being much more dangerous. And there was like, I don't know, apparently a fire somewhere, the fire department couldn't have put out because it was an electric car, so. Yeah, they don't want to put water on it, yeah. Yeah, I know, I'm not sure that our fire department is, would be thrilled about it. But I don't know about that.
That's the interesting, yeah.
Yeah, I don't even remember, they, they had to talk about that type of battery.
Did you ask them if they have to have a specific mechanic that has to work on?
Yes, we did bring that up, and we were talking about where would you take it, um, that really wasn't answered.
That really wasn't answered.
It was, it was the kind of thing they talked about, well, because they think that it's, it's becoming more and more, um, common for people to have electric cars. And that, so more and more, like, um, car mechanics are knowing how to do that, but as far as buses, I wasn't exactly sure where to send them. So, but that was something that's not, not necessarily possible, I just weren't sure, but I'll, I'll say that, too.
And I don't know if they could give us any sort of indication about insurance, but like, I can't imagine the cost of insuring a bus fleet that's carrying hundreds of children. It, I think insurance alone would be cost prohibitive. You may or may not have someone in your community you might want to talk to about running a bus fleet, get their input on what that's like. Ooh, sorry, I mean, Deerfield runs the Concord.
Oh.
And that, yeah, it's quite the job.
Yeah, I imagine it's like.
But it might be nice if they, if they don't have to just say, maybe that's a fair price.
I don't know, it's what, I don't know. Did we know how long this Highland is putting business?
Oh, I don't know. I don't know, I just know that they've done, they have thirty or forty that they've done at schools, but I don't know how long they've been in business, but I can look into that. They're across the country. She might have said, but I don't know.
It's a lot of information on that.
Yeah. Okay, is everybody comfortable with that? I just want to make one more statement, too, because a lot of the scuttle, but also on Facebook was about, oh, you're getting things from China. No, the whole program is everything has to be made in America, that's part of the program, so just sort of put that out there so everybody knows, BPA said has to be made in America.
Even batteries?
Yes.
I missed that. Um, policies.
Policies. Been a while.
It has been a while.
Um. And.
We've moved them to secondary day.
Yeah. I feel like when I look at the secondary, if, if, I didn't listen to a good job of writing everything down, and it's, I'm a little foggy. I do think that, um, correct me if I'm wrong, I think, we went through, you know, I went through all of the second reading ones, except for JF at the bottom, did we talk about JF at the bottom?
I think we couldn't find it.
Um, maybe was that finalized, was that still?
Dean submitted some, um, language for your consideration, but when I looked at the policy, it talked about top off agreements. So I think he sort of missed the fact that we decided not to do that, so I need to take that out and send it back to him and make sure. If you take this out, does this now look okay?
Um, and then I think the third reading, the third reading's up at the top, um, I think that they were sort of hanging in, in, in pretty great also, like, animals in school, was that the?
Yeah, the, um, we had the nurse look at that, and that was good with her, and, um, I checked on the fine balance policy with Amber, and that was good with her.
And we're about to, we're going to contact the league.
Yes, we don't have anything on that yet for LSU.
Okay. So, um, yeah, I didn't talk about those people, so maybe we can hold those in a minute. If that's okay, but then I think we, and this is correct as well, I mean, you go to AC, ACB, ACF, ABC, DAFV, GBC, BRRD. GBEC, GBED, IHBA, IHVAR, JAI, JSCP, JSG, and JKAA. We did all of those?
Yes.
Okay, and we, we agreed that they, it was all basically by law, and just, uh, the school board association had updated models that were really good.
Yeah.
So I think, we were just going to say, yes, let's move those to what they're reading, and if they're willing to take a look at those, you're welcome to, but they're all done by the school association, we agreed.
And we, there were two, I don't know, I, I kind of forgot what we were doing policies tonight. Um, remember there were two, there was something that's supposed to be posted in the lunchroom?
Yeah, yeah, we asked, somebody asked if that poster was in the lunchroom, I forget what it was.
I can't remember, but remember we were reading, it was like, oh, it's posted. And then, um, there was one on discipline, I believe it was, that we were surprised how involved with the state was within, too. Things that like, whoa, I mean, it was surprising to us how it was laid out, and I, I'm sorry, I don't have it, I'll try to find it, but we were very surprised, like.
The new laws are very detailed.
It was like, I remember like.
That was in line with the new laws.
Right, exactly, but it was like.
Nothing we could do about.
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
So I think, uh, we would propose, except for the JF, if you didn't look at everything also, in the second reading list, we'd be with the third reading, um, and then.
If you want to just wait on all of them, you mean?
I think, well, yeah, but yeah, but we'll do a third, a third reading for next time.
Yeah, we'll go all beyond that.
There, we'll move them all next time.
Yeah.
Um, except the JF, and that, you said, it would still be working.
Yeah.
So, if you all want to take a look at it, and you know us or give us any feedback, um, we will take that into consideration, but they were all put together.
All right. Um. Informational items, uh, I did just want to remind everyone, I'm sure you all are there, but the special option on the hair contacts is next Tuesday, tell your friends. Um, and also, it's a state primary, so, very exciting times. Um, any other informational items? All right, public comments.
Sitting that long, it's just gotten to, and I'm sorry. I wanted to point out with these space DCS, um, a group that doesn't exist anymore, but did, was the YES to DCS. That even after things, you know, fall apart as part of the addition, they have concerns, their children are still here, so they're still concerned. Um, and I don't know, you know, who these people are, but I think that maybe you could try and get some of them to come out. Um, I'm not even advocating one way or another, I mean, keep in mind, you start talking about space DCS, and we're doing new studies, and they're going to have, the bookie may come out soon and say, oh my God, there was another addition. So, I mean, there is danger too, to get to this, but there was a, a faction that said, we don't want to just, as it goes, let this be the result for, for the majority of everybody. So, I'm just saying that. That's a contingency, they didn't really know what to do with themselves, and I can tell you, I was in Africa at the time, trying to give them feedback, I wasn't sleeping well, obviously. But, um, with the time zone change, uh, giving the feedback on like, what, some of the things they were trying to do, and I'm like, you can't be talking about firecoats when you don't know about firecoats. You know, I mean, you have to be careful, that kind of thing, I think if you realize. They, they, they have nowhere to put their energy. And I'm not sure that this will give them a place to put their energy, but we still give them a place to maybe ask questions, or say, what is my priority? We know, I know, I can speak for somebody who's not here, one of the priorities is storage under the stairs, I can speak for, I won't name names, but if somebody is concerned about, you know, we keep storing stuff, I look today. We're still storing stuff under this to improvise. Um, so there were people concerned, so I hope that when people would come. You know, I mean, I don't know what the outcome is, I don't know, you know, maybe that's something you need to think about, is when people say, what are you going to do with all this? But, I would like to see the YES to DCS crowd, I want to reinvent themselves and show up.
Thank you.
Oh, and I'll take credit for the fact that I told them I needed to talk to the school for the letter.
Thank you.
I didn't.
Speaking of the letter, I'm listening to the conversation here. Um, I don't envy your, your, your task. But, if people are going to come up and have concerns because they got their tax bill. They're fundamentally not engaged. I mean, you know, that's, if that's a true issue, they're not paying attention. And, at some level, you don't, I don't think, you don't owe them an answer. But, it's a terrific, I mean, you probably, at some level, do, you know, have to respond, but their lack of engagement isn't your issue. It might be your issue, it might be something you can take advantage of. Um, because, what happens in March comes back in December, and pointing out that, that fundamental causality. Um, you know, may, may, may reorient people into a more, sort of, engagement focused discussion. Uh, you know, and, and, and so strategically, it seems, it seems to me that you have an opportunity to actually turn, if people come up and have those kinds of concerns. Make it an engagement session, and, and, I mean, I think it's, it's right to have those things, I think, all in favor of having those public forums, but. It requires some thinking on your part in terms of how you're going to answer specific questions, how you're going to turn, you know. How are you going to turn, you know, and this is, this is unlike COVID. I know you've went through a lot of mess on COVID. This has been true for a long time. The fundamental structure of this has not changed. COVID was a real change. So I, I think you can approach it in a strategic way that will maybe get more answers, be more educational, and, you know, not buy into the idea that you have the enemy. So I think that, that's, if you take that bait, you're done. And if you, if you are aware of it and can, you know, turn it to your advantage or at least the communities of man somehow. I mean, I think that's part of the, the theory behind writing the letter is, these people can figure it out. I don't think that's right. I think, you know, there are better ways to, you know, it's sort of almost patronizing to think that we'll send them a letter in advance of things. It's like, and others happen, this happens every year. It's a matter of degree and, you know, you all don't set the tax rate. So that's not the chip plane to the select for the DRA, but, you know, it's a process. I've written about this process and it's not, it's not a surprise. So if somebody people want, they want to figure out how to work with it. And illicit stuff from people, but if it's considered, it's not a failure. Good timing.
Great timing, thank you. Other public comments? We do not have a non-public session. I hope there are no payments or resignations. Excellent. Second, all in favor of adjourned?
Hi.